Hey Kelly, this is a email from the Chamber.
Who's standing?
It just came in about an hour or so.
Three and a half?
You already have you on the top sheet.
How you doing today?
All right, how are you?
Doing good.
You keeping that touchy to the altar, it's going to burn hot, don't you think?
Well, actually, we got off y'all today, so we don't go back anywhere.
That's great.
And I need this break, but I...
You can catch your breath.
Well, not this week, after this week, oh, today. Although, my schedule's full for the rest of the week. So, been trying to do Christmas shopping all this time. That's where I was at today. So, I'm sort of coming out of Columbus headed here. So, I was sort of relaxed today with the jeans on. I got two grand babies.
That's fun to shop for grand babies.
Well, not babies, I got an eight-year-old and a fifteen-year-old.
But that's, the fifteen-year-old might not be too much fun. The eight-year-old, because you never know about fifteen-year-olds.
Then they still try to compete with one another. Well, the oldest ones try to compete with the youngest ones. I have to explain that to her, she got a lot of boxes, because her stuff is a little cheaper than yours. The stuff I'm buying, you're trying to buy mine. Last Christmas, she was like, "What girl didn't cut it by?" Why is she writing, a sky has so many boxes? I said, "If you look at the prices of her stuff and look at the prices of yours."
Put it together. Hey Kelly.
It all equal to the same amount.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Kelly asked me for us to get the committee round, so he can go watch the basketball game at six o'clock. All right, so this is sports commission, so, you know, we've had a couple of public meetings. Beth and Kelly have probably talked amongst themselves more than a few times. We talked about this at the committee of the whole, and so we're here today to kind of get this train on further down the road. This, I don't want us to be held... I don't want us to be in a hurry because of this potential school, this school board appointment that we'll be making here early next year. It's important for us to do the right thing. And the school board can operate before members for a month or two if they have to. So, what we need to do is make sure we're comfortable where we're going, and our processes and our protocols, and let's get this figured out for the future of Auburn. And if that happens to people right now, we can do that, use this for the school board appointment. And I'm confident that they can proceed for a couple of months with short staff, from your board standpoint. So, I'll let Beth and Kelly go from here.
Well, for the sake of just stringlining this conversation, you have a top sheet with the minute. If you'd really bring a copy, Kevin will send you the extra copies. Thank you for thinking of that as well. So, I think it'll be important just for us to know where we align, what we all agree on, and what we need to have further conversation on. So, kind of stringlining that, we have a top sheet. I opened to review, first being a deadline ramifications. It's kind of the easy thing, right? Having a set deadline, and that being the Monday prior to the next council meeting. So, not a Monday a week prior to the...
What time is Monday?
Close of business.
I mean, it's specific, I mean...
Five P.M.
Okay, yeah.
Does that sound...
Yeah.
Brett, how would we word that from a legal sense? The Monday, when the council meets a week from that Tuesday, so how would we say that?
I would say it's set time, just because Monday to me in the legal world is midnight. Eleven fifty-nine, I can file things with the court.
Yeah. So, five o'clock, but how do we, is it just Monday before, how do we say that?
Is it gonna...
You see what we're trying to do?
Not the same week as the...
The Monday one week before the council meeting.
Do it Tuesday. I, if we're just trying, because it's a great one. Do it one week prior, do it the Tuesday, five o'clock on Tuesday before the meeting.
Well, the Monday falls in line with what staff requires for other deadlines for projects. So, I'm just trying to think of like everything that they require for a packet or an agenda. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, that would be helpful to us.
Okay, yeah.
Don't make that decision.
I was trying to...
Is it Monday by day, or is it Monday the day of the week? Like, is it Monday would be thirteen days before?
It'd be eight days.
So, the language should just be deadline is five P.M., eight days prior to the next council meeting.
So, don't say the word Monday, just say eight days?
And that would address any kind of oddities that we have in meeting times in the future.
I can remember one time that we decided not to push the meeting to the next week, that we actually got on Wednesday. I think it was July the fourth deal or something, one time we did that. So, I think eight days, that's that good? Say eight days before then? So, if we happen to meet on Wednesday, it would be the Tuesday?
Yeah, I mean, to me, I would say keep it what staff has publicized for their deadlines for packets, which is...
Okay, then you can't use a number of days.
Once y'all make a decision on kind of that, we'll...
Well, I'm getting in the weeds, I'm trying to, I'm trying to work with this, and I apologize. Maybe we shouldn't be in the weeds right now, I think we all know what we're trying to do, so...
I like the eight days prior.
We're having three-week meetings a month, or two meetings a month, or we change it to Wednesday or whatever, it won't make any difference.
I'm not getting the weeds. Are you saying eight business days, or eight...
Eight calendar days.
All right, you guys are killing me.
I just, I strongly recommend a time, because...
Five P.M.
Right, if you don't have a time, then people are going to...
Close this, five P.M.
And people are going to apply after.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Announcements, everybody good with the information and what is included in the announcements?
The announcements are now going to include a description of the duties.
They'll have a brief description that you'll proceed with. I mean, is everybody good with that? All right, so we're good there. All right, residency.
God, I didn't think we had a mission to that, I thought we were even running all that.
You know what, I think, you know, I think that does limit, limit our pool of applicants for... Well, we all, I think we all got the email, you know, from the planning commission that I think raised a pretty good points on, you know, peoples that are influenced or governed by, you know, that board. And I don't have a problem with their having some sort of representation on the planning commission, or at least not automatically excluding, how about that? I mean, if you, they're still, they're still going to be vetted, you know, go through an application process, and we can vote them up or down. But I think to automatically exclude a, you know, citizen group that is governed by one of the boards seems a little short-sighted.
I'd have to disagree with you on that, the being, the fact that they do have representation in the county, with our county commissioner representing. As far as individual residents go, I'm not affected by it. It's only subdivisions, as I understand it, that are, come under that purview of having any access or influence to the city. If folks want to be represented by the city, then they'll have to request annexation, pay the taxes, and be under the same rules and regulations as everybody else. That's my opinion.
Sure.
That's good, that's what I'm reading.
So, what about people who live in the, well, you know, you just mentioned the planning jurisdiction. So, you're saying they only are under subdivision regulations, but they, we do provide fire and, you know, first response, public safety to people who live in the jurisdiction? Actually, yeah.
Well, we, we do policing in the police jurisdiction, which is separate from the planning.
But outside city limits?
True, true.
So, they're really getting overwhelmed.
So, what about the non-resident property in the city of Auburn? But not a resident of the city of Auburn?
I agree with Jay, I think for the planning commission, if you live in the planning commission area where the planning commission has thought, I think it'll also be a problem. But I do think if we have a problem, it just don't mean we're not vote for.
That's not only issues, just to automatically exclude somebody. I mean, you're making it, we don't have any problems with planning commission applicants. I know, you know, I mean, historically, we don't, anytime we start restricting and limiting our pool of applicants, again, that's, that's not really an argument for planning commission, but just in general, you know, we're going to have... I'm not necessarily for wholesale restricting of applicants for any of these, with green space advisory board.
Well, and some of...
It has the legally, the state allows to even consider somebody outside the city of...
Yeah, because all the other ones do state that you have to, yeah, the only one in question is the planning.
Well, that's a good point. If the state allows for that, you know, there was some thought at some point, you know, in, in, you know, some reasoning, some rationale, and why they're specifically included. You know, another reason not to overreach someone else, you know, reinvent the wheel.
And there's absolutely nothing that restricts us from being more restrictive in our selection criteria than the state.
Sure.
I just know that there was a storm after the last appointment. And, I mean, it was pretty upward that we would even consider to appoint somebody that doesn't live in the city, is not subject to our law, is not subject to our taxes, makes no contribution to the city, other than happened to be living outside of it. That we appointed somebody last time around, and that has been a, it's been a stinker for people in my ward, I know that.
I tend to agree with you, so far as you don't have a vote in this city, it's hard to have a, have a role where you're affecting the outcome of the planning of this city. And by all means, if you want, we can involve yourself in the city, come and move in.
Well, I will say that individual who's appointed pays occupational tax and pays sales tax when they shop here in our community and works and lives here every day. So, I'm just saying, I mean, there is a buy-in already there for the person that was chosen, and the law allowed us to make that appointment. If we made that change, Kevin, do we have to change the ordinance by which that particular county commission is...
No, I mean, I think you'd just be, I mean, we could change the ordinance, that's the direction we're going to go. Or we could just do a resolution with some kind of policy framework of how you want to approach the boards.
I think you hit on the main point, Brett, is that working pays occupational tax, they're close to the city, they represent, the planning commission, planning department affects people outside the city limits, so I think it was a good candidate, I think it's wise to get approved. So, I think when you say, we're not even going to consider anybody that way anymore, like you limit yourself on what you're possibly getting a good candidate out there. If we get one, we don't think is not paying, not paying occupation taxes, has to live in the planning commission area, then I think you'll probably get voted down. I think you've got a good candidate, a strong candidate, I think it's a shame just automatically that we're not considering you. But if we have it come up and just, I'm just... Oh, we shouldn't vote for the person, and I feel going along with you, say, well, we should have voted for him. But it's take to automatically say we're not voting considering the four years they have.
Can I, can I go a bit further than that? Regarding the rest of the boards, does state law say that they have to be citizens? Or is that just what we agreed to, or we do have an ordinance in the city?
No, they're, back ahead.
State law allows for all boards to be...
No.
No.
Just...
Just playing.
So, well, so what I'm saying is, are we precluded from allowing non-residents to serve on boards by state law?
Well, let me, let me give you some input there. Two things, one, the planning commission and the industrial environment board can, are not restricted by residents. So, the IDB, I believe the language is that you have to be a taxpayer in the city. So, that's kind of wide open, you could own a business or a house, or somehow you can pay taxes.
It's a minimum, if you have a seven-member board, at least five of them have to be qualified electors in the city limits. I'm reading from state code, I don't have that memorized, but...
So, the IDB would be...
But the IDB has authority outside the city limits also.
You've got to be in the city limits, okay. Because I was just thinking, I was thinking about our unique situation where students that attended Scott, believe they can play athletics in our parks and rec, and you may have a unique situation where someone lives outside the city limits and they have a unique perspective, but if we're precluded from state law, that's...
Yeah, there's many of the boards that require you to be a qualified elector. Then you would have to be a city resident.
I can only speak from the feedback that I got from board six constituents who at that, at the last appointment, found it to be objectionable, given the fact that there were a wide, a wide pool of candidates that it seemed, the optics of it were questionable, and it sowed a lot of questions in the constituency that I, that I visited with. So, and in the interest of representing those people who felt so moved to contact me about it, I feel I'm doing my job to air their opinions that, you know...
Exactly, and I understand, we were all part of that whole conversation citywide. I mean, you know, I saw the same thing, you know, and I get it. I think that, you know, I wish there may have been a little more dialogue, you know, and explanation in that. I think there was probably a, you know, a firestorm of optics, you know, and, and maybe not so much explanation as to why that's first of all allowable, you know, and then why, I mean, I think this evening we'll have to start, you know, explaining or defending an appointment or recommendation, so... But I think there could have been some, some explanation, and it might have helped a little bit. Maybe not, I don't, I don't know. Like, I certainly understand the perception. I just don't want us to overcorrect and exclude anyone from ever, we still have a voting board on any of these things. And I don't want to see an overcorrection where ten years down the road, we're carrying ourselves in butt because we've got the most qualified candidate. I'm making a fictitious, you know, fictitious situation here. I don't want to see an overcorrection on something that, I don't want to make a mountain of it, or an overcorrection.
All of these boards are voluntary, and so the idea is that we're trying to get the best, best quality candidate to a position that's going to volunteer their time. It's not like you can compensation. So, I mean, to me, we've got to have the, the idea is, if the law allows us to have the biggest pool of talent, we should do that. Because we've got the master planning, that's got the super great experience that lives outside the boundary, or lives within the boundary but outside city limits, and they're going to bring a great plethora of knowledge to the board, we would, I don't think that we would be wise in saying, only because of your zip code, you can't better the city.
And one, I think that we are taking, and I hope that we may all agree upon this, we're going to have an interview process for the planning commission.
Sure.
So, that, I think, may address that whole issue and allow for us to choose the best candidate based off of the qualifications in a much more open platform versus just eight person getting nineteen applications and making...
I guess, I feel like it'll take care of itself, I guess is my point. You know, let's, let's don't paint ourselves in a corner as an overcorrection.
We're going to historical context, Kevin, how, do you know how often this has occurred in history of Auburn?
Yeah, I think once exactly right twice.
So, we're really talking, we're spending a lot of time on an issue that's really not a problem.
In a whole process of choosing people, you know, I mean, as Beth said, we are totally overhauling this process for planning in school, overhauling. Stephen Hager, point you out, you got any thoughts on this?
I do. I guess I, I guess I've just been listening to both sides, and...
Sure.
I've, I've had constituents that, that were very vocal and voiced their, their opposition to, to bringing someone outside. Honestly, I've not heard that from, I haven't heard the other side from, from anybody. So, I think it's, I tend to like to represent what the residents say, but I hear what Jay is saying, and what everyone else is saying here. I think there's a lot of really good valid points. And I know we're primarily speaking about Robin Bridges. I think she's a friend to, to many people on, on the council. I think she does bring a, a good perspective. But I think we also need to separate our friendships and really think about what's best for the city. And so, I just want to make sure that everyone thinks that, that you're not thinking of just what Robin is, is as a friend, and just think about what the process is and what we're doing.
By that same token, let's don't overcorrect by one situation to totally exclude a certain citizen.
Yeah, no, not yet.
Well, I think because...
They're not citizens, it's not citizenship.
You're right.
They're not citizens of Auburn.
Applicant.
The purpose of, of all the boards and commissions of the city of Auburn are to do things in the best interest of the city of Auburn.
Correct.
It's not our business to go out here and, you know, okay, we're going to encourage somebody to build a subdivision out here, and, you know, oh, yeah, by the way, let's make sure they have representation. But if, if, if they don't, if they weren't serving in Auburn, I think that would be an Auburn person, not just happen to show up and work here.
I agree, and I believe that this city has got a wide pool of great applicants. That at some point, you need a boundary, and that boundary for me is where you vote. Where you have a stake in this city, where you get to choose who's going to represent you. And you, I find that that boundary, we will find a great pool of talent within this city.
That is great, okay. So, how do we want to proceed on that recommendation as a resident?
Well, I, I feel like, well, Kelly feels, you know, I just feel like if, you know, the person out of Zach in Auburn, you know, that they're going to be on a board or a commission here in Auburn, and I've just come to work here. So, and then, and then I also think about the fact that we do have to listen at what the people want, because those are the people that voted to see me. So, we can't just exclude the fact that, you know, we sitting around the table and it's eight of us, but we was voted in by these people, so we, you know, we have to consider what the public want. And that, that to me is just every issue that comes, comes about. It's just not about us.
I think we're missing another point, is I agree with both sides, but I think you can make that decision when you nominate these people, if they're outside the city limits, and I think Bob and Kevin, oh, you can make your point. You can make a good point, I won't tend to go who makes the best point, who's right, who's wrong. But I don't think where the state law says you can't do it, you just automatically exclude someone because of what they do. I think you make your point, and you're going to make your choice, and you bring up what the citizens seem to want, and we go from there with that, but I think, I think you can handle it at that level there.
A person who votes within the city? I'm, I'm good with that. A lot of people said, "Why on earth happened here?" And I believe not only that, is that appointment in and of itself has brought about this task force, because people were dissatisfied.
No, no, that task force has been in the works for, since four years ago. Yeah, when we had our last school board appointment, so...
How long ago was it that the other person served that was out in the boundary?
That was Kim Harrison.
She served as a...
She lives, she lives on Beehive Road. She's actually directly next to something that just came into the city now, and she was a city planner by education, and had a real estate background, and at the time, there weren't other applicants that she was willing to serve. If memory serves me correctly, it was probably at least ten years ago.
Does, similar to the IDB, does this, does the planning have a requirement for a minimum of residents?
No.
So, is the fear in this that the planning commission could become a majority vote? Out of, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we would ever be in that position to do that, to vote for, if there were becoming, what is it, nine? How many members would be...
There's nine.
Okay, so five. So, is the fear here on this council right now that we would, we would appoint five out of city members? Because, if my understanding is this position, Robin Bridges is in her position. So, if this is, now Stephen brought up, if this is about some, a single person, that's done, that's taken care of.
I don't think it is, I don't think it's...
Well, I'm not saying that, I just want to be clear and put it in perspective that in the history of Auburn, this has happened twice. And so, it's not obviously a frequent problem. And secondly, I don't think it's this council who would sit and take a position that we're going to put a majority of non-citizens. Again, I'm not coming from a position of supporting whoever's on the board, they're there, they're on that position. Where I'm coming from is limiting quality applicants that the law says that we can do. This is not, this is nothing personal, this is just looking, limiting a pool of talent. And I think the voters have tested us with that decision, is to make a point.
My, this is my sense from, from campaigning this summer, is that this was another of a, kind of a cumulative impact of distrust and disharmony with electorate and the leaders of the city at that time. And so, you had the construct, the development of downtown. That, that certainly created much anxiety that we're all well aware of. And then the hotel project came on, and the decision to raise the height, that created anxiety and, and hurt feelings and distrust in the community. And then this, this appointment came, I think it was right, a month before the election. And, and, and there was three people that were, that were appointed, and there were nineteen that applied. And, and two of the three came with a lot of controversy and questioning that I think was very much inflamed by other things that were going on in and of the city. So, you know, I heard the same thing Bob Parsons heard. I mean, where I was around people, they were like, "I don't understand." And, and I get it, and I trust that we've got a great city now, that we're going to have great talented people that are going to fly for our boards and commissions, and I trust that we're putting in procedures right now that are going to allow us to pick the very best people, especially for these two boards. So, we need to figure out how we need to move forward here, Beth, is that kind of where we are?
Yeah, just, so, two scenarios, one, we make a requirement, the other scenario is we leave it as is, as the current code states, and we, we need laws that have to be processed, and as a council, our consensus is that we would give much, much heavier weight to an applicant who is a resident. Those are kind of the two options that's the other thing.
And I don't have a problem if that's included in the language.
So, whether we could make it a majority, that a majority must be living in the city limits. We need that requirement, that's going to actually occur.
With your creation of your matrix, does, does that, does the residency factor into it? Or could it be a possible... Or could it be a, a possible determinant with your matrix?
I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah, it is in there now.
Yeah.
So that weighs against them, right?
I said now.
Yeah, if you are not a resident.
And that's fine, I'm just saying I hate to, that's a, that's a great point. Yeah, I'm just saying I hate to just whack off, no, automatically, you don't even apply.
See, I'm, I'm totally fine with that.
No, no, I'm totally fine with that.
Perfect.
And I sure am not looking forward to my next board meeting, because they all applauded it when we talked about what we had done with it. And that was for two and three, we got a little applause on what we said, or required of this.
Yeah, well.
And, uh, that was another one of these, I thought you were gonna restore trust, I said, well, I guess not.
Well, how are we not restoring trust?
By having an interview process?
Because we're not listening to what the public wanted us to do, that's why.
You listen through, that's why it's broad, that's why we're having a half an hour conversation about one, one requirement. Yeah, that's a pretty important requirement. I agree, that's, I mean, we, we listened and we're, we're having a discussion about it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's part of the process, I mean, that's right.
So do, but I don't know how you're going for that, because clearly, you know, clearly, I, I can see your point, I definitely can see your point, that, that all within the, within the law as it's written by the state. However, I don't see a problem with this city being picky. And, 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 and expecting that anybody who lives here and votes here gets to determine the planning of it. Somebody who doesn't vote in here, and, and the public is speaking to that.
Well, there's two different things, right? So being a resident doesn't mean you're a voter.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, that, that's the language, yeah. Being a vote, voting, being a voting member of the public determines your ability to be a planning member of the public.
So, I mean, there's, yeah, so we're talking about residency, and we're saying, do, does this council want to mandate that you be a resident? Now, with the exception of IDB and the planning commission, all other ones within their codes, if we go through them, say, like, for example, a public parks and rec must duly be a qualified elector and taxpayer in the municipality. That's code. So, does this body want to require residency? Or do we want to fall back on to what is actually allowed by state code and then implement our interview process for the planning commission and rely upon that? And as a consensus, we know that the weight would be given to someone who has residency, i.e. the matrix would define that as well. And I believe through the discussion, we are being very open and thorough and diligent, and I, and I don't believe that we're ignoring the conversation that has taken place through the campaign process. I think we're giving very much the weight of that conversation to this whole thing. All the other ones, and we can walk through them if we need to, but, um, tree commission must be a citizen of the city of Auburn. Water Works Board must be an elector and owner of real property in the city of Auburn. So they're, it's specific in the code. The council just needs to make a decision, I don't want it for it.
So, I mean, I, I think we're kind of in past right here, so we just need to, I think we just need to raise some hands and go around the room and decide how we wanna do this, okay? So if you do not, so how, so if you feel like that you must be a resident to serve on the planning commission, so you have to be a voting resident of the city of Auburn, if that's what you would like to see, uh, for a planning appointment, watch, raise your hand, I love that. So that's one, two, three, four, okay? If you feel like it's okay to be in the planning jurisdiction, I know we've gotta word smith this a little differently, but if you're in the planning jurisdiction, um, you can serve on the planning commission, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, okay, so that's five of the four. So that's what we'll go with, but we'll use the met, ma, metrics, matrix, matrix.
And know that the interview process, the matrix, and that this council's, um, desire, based off of conversations we have with the citizens here, is that we will, um, lean heavily towards someone who is a resident.
Sure, and that, that's something, like I say, I, I completely get it, I think we're all part of those conversations, but I think our, our matrix and our interview process is gonna naturally take care of that, I just hate to.
Yeah, let me, let me just kind of inject it, just so we're all clear about what we're doing. And for the sake of the public too. So we're having a workshop, we're having a discussion, and we're trying to come to a consensus on what, um, ultimately, the city council is going to vote on.
Correct.
Right.
So you're, you're not voting to enact anything today.
No.
There's no permanent actions being taken, you're just gonna come to a consensus of what you will vote on in the future. And that's an important distinction.
No, thank you, Kevin, for clearing that up, and if I didn't set the, set me that way, I apologize, okay?
All right, two term limit. Two terms, two full terms, does it mean if you're, um, voting as a partial, then you have two consecutive full terms? Part limit.
I just like to get a star in there and, like, feel like a good time, and that's, uh.
Two terms is either eight or.
Twelve.
Twelve, well, years depending on the board.
Or ten, school board or ten.
Two more, plus whatever.
They got the half a term left in them.
Two full terms, and like Bob stated, we have really good applicants who hopefully can follow the process and come in and.
In general principle, I'm good with that, I like that, I, I, once again, I think.
This is an example of where I'm coming from.
No, there, there should be extenuating circumstances.
Well, I got things on the, on the, um, school board, I, I hate, so if you have, if you wanted a third term, so you can have third one. Man, those, you can go over state, have students down, and we're blessed to have somebody on the board. I think you get a real star on some of the board you're going to accept, uh, you know.
Well, and let me, let me just, I mean, so the, the mayor has the purview of appointing the housing authority. There will be a person coming up for reappointment to seek in a third term. They have a very, uh, unique situation, uh, Sharon Tolbert called me the other day about the understanding of HUD, and, um, this person's a banker here in town, and she really wants this person to stay on for a third term, because they've got a lot of things that are going on with the housing authority. And that's the mayor's purview to do that, and that really, that board is really a very specific board, and it's very sensitive to a specific area of Auburn. And I'm leaning towards reappointing that gentleman to the board. So I want y'all to hear that, that I have the authority to do that, and I did that, but I came in here and said, two. So I just want you to get all the cards on the table, and see if y'all understand.
They have to reply though, right?
Yes, absolutely, that person has to go through an application process.
Every single person, and so they would be, and so the idea that they wouldn't be automatically qualified, so if, if this council made a decision, it wouldn't hamstring future councils if there was a different makeup or demographic of the council. I mean, they could, they would just apply with any other candidate, right? And so, again, I'm, I'm on the, I'm on the same position as was on the limiting, this is another limiting factor that is, I think is unnecessary, in that we're trying to, to me, on volunteer boards, where this is taking time, and people are, they're taking time from their families and their work and all of that. Somebody's willing to step up to that, let's, let's encourage them to step up in that and play the ball, because they're doing good for us. We should try to get the biggest pool of talent and stay for the longest we can, I mean, not as well ride a horse that dies. That's, that's what, but that, you know, you want something like, I, that's just my, that would be, I understand a term limit, I mean, I'm, I'm, in local office, I, I support term limits for myself, but in appointments on volunteer boards, again, I don't know that we need to be in a position of limiting talent, just my opinion.
Consensus?
I agree with Brad.
I guess we're looking five four again, because, you know, I just, I just think, uh, I, I like turnover, I like freshness, I like new people, I like citizen involvement, and I, and, uh, and I think we should be encouraging more and more citizens to get involved. And, and, uh, a, as much as some of these appointments are difficult, uh, the, the actual job at hand i- is difficult and requires discipline and study and, uh, attention, and, uh.
And I actually see this one different, I see this one as we do need to have fresh blood coming in. And so I lean towards the two, two term limit requirement.
Yeah, and, and I was gonna say, I, I was gonna say that even though it, 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 there, there, there's a skill set that you must develop over time, it's not rocket science, at the end of the day, whichever, whichever appointment, it, it's, it's difficult and requires, you know, a studious attitude and so forth. Take, for example, I'm a city council member, I, I barely know what I'm doing, but give me two or three years, and I will know what I'm doing.
Absolutely, and, and we should create succession planning, right? Like, so we should, you know, if, if you're looking, like, maybe you don't wanna run again, or you want two terms only, or however you wanna do that, or you're voting to say, you wanna start looking towards, you know, what does the board look for succession? You know, what is, what is the school board looking as a succession, you know, like, we should be, you know, mentoring and.
Yes.
And, and it just hasn't any good, you know, company would do, build up your, um, so I, I mean, I'm in favor of the two term limits personally. So do we wanna go around and do a quick?
Let, let me ask a question, if we were to set the two term limits and say no one applies, what would, what would happen in that, in that situation?
We'd have to have, we'd have to have some kind of ability to reappoint somebody at that point in time. We've gotta have some kind of life preserver out there for us in case that happens, and look, that happens from time to time, that's happened.
We have to do a search committee and try to find somebody who in there is ready to do it. Well, why, exactly, that's exactly my point, why in the world would we want to limit one, limit our authority as this city council or a future city council, why do we wanna take away the authority we have? And two, why would we wanna put ourselves in a position where we have to create a search committee if we have someone that wants to serve in the position? That, that just.
Could we say something about, we strongly encourage two terms? That in some kind of circumstances, we, we could reappoint, or is that a way to create a hybrid?
There again, if you appoint them, and they got two terms, and the majority don't wanna have a third, well, they won't have a third. I need to send something.
We're creating more problems.
I do, I mean, and not to, you know, I, I do see the size of this one too, like, I, I totally get it, but and I do default to our, our interview process and your matrix, and I, you know, we're putting a lot more thought into, to all of this. If we've got a, got a person, you know, an appointee, um, that's been there four times, and a better applicant applies, you know, boom, I mean, I just feel like, I feel like we're starting over every time, you know, there's a pool of applicants for, or, or whatever, anytime there's an, an opening, and I don't think, I think, and I, I, it's my impression and why I'm in favor of, of the matrix and the interview process, because we're not necessarily waiting, or maybe it does come into the matrix, but not necessarily heavily waiting someone that's been there three terms over, someone new, you know, a new applicant. And so by default, every time, every time that position rolls over, it's, it's, you know, level playing field. And so by limiting our, you know, by a term, term limit, I'm saying we don't necess, and we're unnecessarily limiting it to, to two term limits if we've got good applicants. If we don't have good applicants, you know, I mean, not good applicants, if we don't have a, a plethora of, of applicants, then we're hand, not hamstringing ourselves by not having someone apply.
We're limiting our authority of city.
Wasn't bored, Dr. Good just got on.
IDB.
So, in his third, second term, his third term, he wants another one, we gonna say, no, you're not, we got through, you can't do it. So, I mean, we're blessed to have him on there, so, while he had that option, because I'm, I'm positive nobody in this room will vote, take a loss, people with a third term.
But by the same token, if Mr. IDB excellence shows up and applies against him, he gives.
Well, we're going there.
Golden, we've got two, two fantastic applicants.
And I had no problem voting for the six star, but.
I don't think it's a question of telling somebody, no, you can't, it's, it's a question of somebody understanding the, the criteria by which, by which we function. So it's not like we're saying, um, even though you're awesome, we don't want you because of our rules. It's, it's a, it's an agreement that, uh, an applicant reads the conditions by which they're going to function in the council, and they go, at the end of my second term, I'm done, that, what a great experience that was, that heralded somebody else's.
Yeah, well, you know, and I can speak on that, because I served on the cemetery board for two terms, well, actually, two terms in, uh, a year, because somebody turned, they didn't finish out their term, so they actually they served their turn, again, I, um.
Was reappointed.
Reappointed, and I was able to say, serve two terms, and I was, it was understood that I was only gonna serve two terms, so I didn't have a problem with that. Uh, and so when my term came for it to end, one of the stipulations was, is that I can still serve again. Uh, I couldn't serve another year, another term, the next term, but I could apply to serve.
In the future.
In the future. So if something don't work out with somebody that first, that term, then I had, had the ability to, to serve another term, serve again. So, you know, I don't see anything wrong with.
You don't see anything wrong with.
With the two terms.
With just two terms?
As long, as, as long as it's stated, that they have served those two terms, then, then.
Two full terms.
Yeah, two fo, full terms.
So like Kelly said, you, you get a full and a partial term.
Yeah, so that person is prepared that, you know, my term is about to be over. And if somebody didn't apply, then I think that, that's when, I guess whoever we could come in and say, well, okay, well, we didn't get no application, maybe that person wants to serve another term, something like that, yes.
Look, I'm good with the two terms, but I think we've gotta have a life preserver out there if we don't get applicants, or, you know, I mean, I, we, we can't just hamstring ourselves or put ourselves in vise, uh, because there are some of these boards that I know that we've had to scratch and claw to find people that wanna serve, so we've gotta have some kind of language in there, but Kelly, that allow us liberties if we don't have any applicants or.
I agree, yeah, in the event of across all of them, you know, that.
The board, council approval for a third term, I mean, it would have to be anyway.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, and like, I mean.
So might have the rule.
At the end of the day. Might have the rule, um, yeah. All right, well, let's, let's sleep on that one. Two commission board appointments, um, there are a few commercial development planning in West Pace Village, that may require, been currently serving on more than one board commission because of, um, knowledge that is required or how they interact. Um, we've had some input on that, um, but to me, if, I think we've gotta allow it to open up some, and so how, how does anybody feel about that recommendation? The recommendation is, um, like, if you probably can serve on grade space and cemetery, you could pick one or the other, get someone there.
So these are the three, commercial development authority, planning commission, West Pace Village improvement district. So if you were on one of those three boards, you could also serve on another board.
Now, currently.
Every.
And moving forward. Now, currently, yes, Connie, and moving forward.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just those three, just those three.
Those three, so if you're on education, you could be on a commercial development, if that's the, in a way.
But you couldn't be on board education and Parks and Rec.
Correct.
It's just those three right there, it's on that sheet.
Oh, it is listed.
Yeah, it's listed on there, your hand out, yeah, right there.
I think you have, I, I've always assumed objection is just landing, landing in talent and applicants, that's, that's my question, yeah. If we have an opening and if somebody we feel qualified, again, I just think we're unnecessarily restricting our authority on board, or by the city council.
I look at it as we're opening up opportunities for other citizens to participate.
I agree. That's a choice that we made in the interview process, as the people apply, the council can then make that decision instead of unnecessarily hamstringing ourselves if we have an opening, we've gotta have a task force or a search committee or something with a position, whereas, I, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm just a little bit confused as why we want to take a position as an elected body and limit our board, and limit the board.
I kinda see this, uh, compared to a free margin, you know, I mean, let, let the best man win, let's, let's, best applicant win. Whether that's two term limits, two commissions and board appointments, you know, whatever we're doing, I, I totally, I completely understand, I just. Well, here's, here's what's happened, so if somebody was serving on the board, but the council felt like they were in a better place to go to another board, they needed another board, then we've always asked them, we did keep them from applying for that position, we just said, if you get appointed, you have to, you have to resign to another board, that's how we've handled it in the past except for these three, okay? So if I was on Parks and Rec and I wanted. So if I was on Parks and Rec and I wanted to apply for the school board, I can do that. And if I was appointed to the school board, I'd have to drop off of Parks and Rec, and then Parks and Rec, find somebody to fill my term. That's how we've done it. Kevin, can you speak to what the cities, I mean, we don't have a, we got a couple of people in here for four years, and one in here for six years. Do you know what the kind of the city's origin of this kind of philosophy was? Is there any.
They're serving on multiple boards. Yeah, I mean, in particular, the, um, you know, there's a huge link between the planning commission and the commercial development authority, for example, where, um, projects are going to the CDA and for consideration of incentives. And, um, having the knowledge of a planning commissioner on that board is, is very valuable in terms of, you know, what's available in designing and all those kind of things, so that's been, been very valuable. Um, same with the planning commission and the west pace authority, um, that's a very valuable connection as well. So, I mean, there's very frequently times when you have, um, expertise on one board that can, can definitely add, um, to, to another. I mean, I could very easily see, um, you know, linkages with the IDB, linkages with the downtown redevelopment authority thing of that nature. Um, you know, where you wanna draw on the expertise of these other, other boards. And so I think that, while the general, um, sentiment has been, you know, you should just generally be on one board, but there have been exceptions made when, when that expertise is, is needed.
Well, those are kind of sexy boards, you know, I, I think my, my speed bump is the green space advisory board and the cemetery board.
Hey, they're pretty good.
I said, if, if we've got somebody who wants to serve on both of them, I mean, and, and limited pool, I mean, if we've got five people applying for the green space advisory board, and one of them is already on the cemetery board, fine, exclude him, you know, of them. But if no one applies for either one of them, and we've got this rule where you can't do both, then, you know, that, that's kind of my point. It's not the, it's not the big fancy ones, it's the, the bicycle committees not the point, but the, the green space advisory board and the cemetery board. If we've got somebody willing to serve on both of them and don't, and have a limited pool of applicants, what's it hurt? And if we have a bunch that apply for one, then, again, go, go into our matrix, exclude them.
Call me an idealist, but I'm really, uh, I'm really hoping that the direction that this council will take will be very much a, a arms open welcoming for citizen contribution. And, and, and the idealist part of me is that I'm going la, 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 that we know what it costs, that all come rushing in to participate. And I'm confident that if we sell ourselves as, come and participate, let's do this together, Mayor Anders, I think is, uh, is an opportunity for, for the public to really have, uh, a stake in the direction of, of this city. So, I would like to see us a, a, adopt this, a, and also change the manner in which we function to the direction of, uh, this whole idea of citizen participation. And maybe even the driest of boards, as sexy as possible.
And Bob, is that, but, and I'm, I'm the devil's advocate here, um, is that a culture that we establish? Or are those, like Brett said, laws that we are pitting ourselves into? Okay.
I think that's exactly, I agree with him, and I want, I want as many people to apply for these things as possible, that'd make it easier, first of all, for us to appoint them. But we're setting a negative, I mean, not, we, we, we are limiting in citizen involvement if we start limiting term limits and, and limiting the number of appointments.
To a degree.
I, I, I have the same optimistic attitude, hoping that we will have ten people applying to all these boards, and now this is a moot point. You don't think. I guess that's, I mean, I'm, I'm, I know I'm agreeing with you, like, I, I hope, I hope we do have a, you know, an avalanche of, of applicants.
Yeah.
For all these, and none of this will matter. And so, to avoid playing ourselves in the corner by, by saying you, you can't serve on two, what happens if we don't have that avalanche of applicants?
Bob, we're gonna, I'm, I'm totally confident we're gonna, we're gonna serve the people with that mantra, and that is the culture that we're gonna create. And, and I, and I do believe that we're gonna be open and available to new people and all that have never served in things, never served any areas before. Um, and that'll start by the way we conduct ourselves and how we go about doing things, so.
Well, I think the last council was pretty much the same way, I think they're getting bad rap, some of their stuff now. I don't think anybody got this straight in there, but, I mean, just cause handful of folks on the board, I take a seat for that. Uh, I, I, I worked mighty hard to serve my citizens' ward eight.
And what we're trying to, I think you were all on the same page, we're just coming at it from a different perspective.
I agree.
And so, is it that we need to identify culture by which this council adopts? I.e., a resolution that we all sign and say, we adopt, you know, we'll be open, you know, whatever that is, right? And that we are going to establish some key guidelines that, that we operate within? And that these are kind of our, what's the, um, kind of our, our guiding principles of how we, um, do boards and commissions? Or do we want to, um, be, um, black and white and say, this, this, and this? Um, so I think theoretically, we're gonna, we're gonna establish that first. Are we willing to, we've done some really great work, and these are great suggestions, and the, the palette is there for these things to happen, and the appetite is for these things to be implemented. And so are we, um, willing to allow ourselves as a council to have a culture and adopt this principle of a better process with these pr- guiding principles? And we don't have to have a, an, I.e. resolution that we vote upon, but we just vote upon a, more or less a resolution of, this is how we're gonna operate? And keep each other in check on that, through the process that we do? Or do we say, um, you know, two term limits, those two boards and the missions, and, and then the last of the interview? I, I do think, do we all agree on the interview process for, 'cause then we're kind of getting on the six o'clock hour and then we all. Um, would like to go do some additional things, but these are important, and, um, the school board and the planning commission interview process, how do we all feel about that? Yes, ma'am?
I'm a big proponent of it.
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think it's great.
I'm a big proponent of it.
Consensus on that, that we have a formal interview process for.
Those two.
Those two, okay, so we've got one.
What to them?
Planning board.
School, school board and planning.
And just to clarify, 'cause I've had this question, it's, the public is not doing the interview, the public will be able to listen to the interview process, the council.
There'll be open meetings.
There'll be open meetings, yes, but they will not.
Okay. All right, so we're all in a consensus and all agreement that that would be the recommendation that we would like to see?
I'm, I'm not free with this, I'm only one person, stuff like that.
Your consensus, your majority?
Yeah, majority.
Okay. No, this one is you.
You got it.
Okay.
But just to be correct, I, you know, I, I just wanna understand what, what we, what we're voting on now. We're voting on, uh, interviews, open interviews.
Open to the public.
We bring in a person, and we sit around and take, we interviewing this person, but it's open to the public. That's sort of intimidating.
Two, two absolute positions.
It, 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 you know, I just say that, but, yeah, it's, it's, it's good to do it like that, that way the public can know, but.
Look, I'm not, I'm not for any type of gotcha situation, I mean, I think we oughta, we oughta provide the, you know, we need to talk about the kind of questions we wanna ask, and why do we wanna ask those questions, a lot of thought needs to be put into that, we need to.
Right, and those questions will be asked, same of every.
Everybody gets the same questions.
They'll get them ahead of time.
They get them ahead of time, they know what we're gonna ask.
And they're actually in our recommendations, you know, some simple questions.
So very, so very, um, informal but formal, so, you know.
We're not trying to embarrass anybody, catch anybody, it's a.
Fifteen, twenty minute interview with each of the finalists, um, with a panel of three or five, whatever this body decides on. And then we go forth and make the recommendations to the council, and at the end of the day, of all of these things, the council, um, with the exception of the ones by our code, um, are the ones who vote as a majority of the nomination. So, at the end of the day, we all have the duty of our election, our, our position, to make that recommend, that vote yes or no as a majority, so.
Well, that's sort of a relief, because I was thinking that you was talking about, you know, just like if you go on a job interview, you don't know what the person gonna ask you.
Right.
You ain't prepared, but if, if, if they being prepared, and we sending them questions, then I don't have a problem.
Right.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't want nobody to sit around the table and they don't know what, what the heck we finna ask them, and. Now, that's intimidating, seriously.
Is the preliminary question gonna be part of the process, or are we just saying that that, this council's gonna do preliminary questions? Cause I like to think of this not today on this council, but as the future trend, as it creates stability. I mean, yes, we're talking right now potential problems, is this gonna be used as a gotcha thing in the future? Well, you can say that now, because what this is the makeup of the board.
No, but you're asking if the questions are gonna be part of the process.
Well, yeah, I got two questions, I'm not that much, sorry. First question is, are, is, is it gonna be put in stone that there will be preliminary questions presented to candidates?
I think what's gonna be in stone is that we have interviews for the school board and the planning commission.
Yes, I think it's risky. I, I think you're gonna, again, I think you're trying to win talent because of the fact that if this council says our standard is to provide questions previous, previous, it does not stop a future council from calling people on the carpet and embarrassing them.
No, 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 we're, we're saying if you are an applicant and you are one of the finalists, you will be given the questions that every applicant will have.
This one, is that we're gonna be requi- is that what we're requiring? I just wanna know it's gonna be in writing that it cannot be manipulated in the future to steer.
He's saying two councils from now, they may not get them.
But we can't control what happens to the council, they can change everything.
Well, it's, you know, we're changing the process now, if somebody wants to change what we put in place later, rather than it's up to that council, we'll figure that out.
We're just getting, trying to get to a level of operation and effort.
Everything we're talking about, I completely understand in every position of this, I'm just trying to present my opinion.
That's why we're here, man.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I don't want anyone to take offense to being, I don't agree with their position.
That's why we're sitting around the table, having an open and honest discussion, that's what we need to do.
So, consensus is, what we need to have consensus on moving forward is, does this body want to have an interview process for school board and planning commission?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, all in favor?
Yes.
The Bible.
Okay.
I'll go along with it.
So we have a consensus there.
I don't know, I'm with it.
I mean, it does bear, I mean, there's, I, I think, you know, and again, going back to, you know, hearing how some of these things shook out, you know, the last six months, um, you know, I do think this is a step in the right direction in, in trying to get, get everyone involved. I do see that, I guess, just, just to throw it out there, I do see, you know, the hurdle of perhaps qualified applicants. Terry Jenkins might not be so inclined to interview for a school board position when, I know, and if he doesn't, then so be it, he's not a team player.
Donald Largely's on board one time, I don't think he's gonna be there.
You know, so I'm just, again, playing the devil's advocate, you may be pushing, you know, you may be pushing away some, some good applicants, and maybe.
Then you may be bringing in some good ones.
Abs- I, I, I understand, I, I just, it, it, it just wasn't mentioned, so I worried to throw it out there, I mean, let's say if they're not gonna be a team player, maybe we don't need them anyway, but.
But regardless of the interview, we can still bring in both those qualified talent, we don't have to have an interview ring, it's anyone of talent. Right? Is that not true? We can still bring everybody that's been named, but one action will eliminate some of those parties, is if we have an interview process. And so, we can bring in everybody, and this body was elected to make decisions and to appoint people to these positions. And so, I'm just, we're taking a position to limit ourselves again, we're limiting our authority and we're limiting our talent.
We did look at best practices across the state and the school, um, we didn't make this stuff up. So, uh, it's not unusual for this process to be followed.
Absolutely, and some great recommendations came from Dr. Jenkins and the school board. Um, and reputable communities that we look to as benchmarks do provide interview process to other school boards.
That's, that's totally good.
Brad, I, look, I, I would be ashamed if we embarrassed anybody, humiliated anybody through this process. I only want us to be able to identify the very best candidate, and I want, I want them to be comfortable, and I want them to be prepared, and I want them to not be worried that we're trying to, to, uh, to embarrass them through this, through the interview. So, um, I just really believe with those two boards, that board and that commission, because of the public nature of the work that they do, and the heightened sensitivity of the work that they do, that it's now time for us to consider this process. And look, like anything we did, if, if we learn in two years that this is a horrible mistake, I hope we're all big enough to look each other in the face and say, man, that interview deal ain't working.
Of course.
You're right.
Until y'all talk me into it.
Tell me you remind us that we talked him into it.
Okay, real quick, um, interview panel, which we can get into that, um, a little bit later, but things to think about, um, for the interview panel for the school board and planning, um, a third person, a three person panel or a five person panel? Um, the makeup of those panels would be the mayor, mayor pro temp, and a, um, third person that, um, go, go there for me, could you do this?
I thought it was the mayor or the mayor pro temp plus two council members.
That'd be on a, on a three person.
Three person panel.
So, mayor or mayor pro temp plus two. The other option was five of whatever makeup you wanna make.
Does the council have the option to sit on the interview?
Does what?
Does the council have the option to sit on the interview?
To be on?
If, if, if it'd be in the interview.
That's what we're saying.
No, 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 I'm saying you're gonna send a three person interview process, does the entire council have the opportunity to sit on the interview?
No, that.
Why?
That's what we're saying, is, it's a three person panel.
You could, if, why can't I, I'm a, I'm an elected official in this city, why can't I set an interview process for the board of education?
Well, the rationale was, we're gonna have to have a full day to interview a number of, hopefully a number of candidates, three, four, five, and. Trying to get all nine of us together at any one time.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying.
That was the practicality of why we wanted to limit it to either three or five, to, to less, something less than, uh.
Well, I think what he's saying. No, 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 right, no, I'm, I'm not saying that, I understand we gotta have a minimum, I mean, that's gonna require time, but I'm saying, are you restricting me from sitting on the interview process?
No, I mean, it's gonna be, well, the way I'd follow it, either the mayor or the mayor pro temp, so one of the two hubas here, along with two other council members, if you wanna sit on it, you just make your, make it known, and, well, I will appoint.
You said two other, you meant three other, right?
No, if we're doing, if we're doing a three person.
What if you get your meeting set up, and you say, you just say, if there's got five, and he wants to come sit in, and, and he gets free or something like that, he wants to come sit in on it, can he be allowed to come sit in on it?
I'm just sitting on it, I wanna participate.
Exactly.
I'm an elected official, so I have the, I actually have the opportunity to provide input.
I don't think you can deny him the opportunity, he wants to come sit in on it.
I have no problem with that either.
I was very available.
I, I, I agree with you.
It's just a practical sense.
I'm, I'm agree with you. That's how big, cause when you interview, and you, I, I, I pretty much wanna be involved in the interview, I don't want, want it to be said, well, only three of us could've, you know, could come. If I feel like I can take that day off and, and be in the interview, I'd like to be sit.
Well, I think the way you said, it needs to be a minimum. It needs to be a minimum.
Okay, a minimum, okay.
I know what, I know what I'm saying, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna get into situations where you go, no, 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 'cause I, it, this is something, we, our duty is to present.
From our word, that's why we're here around this table, man, and have our conversations.
We're good. Seven of three, and council members will be on the interview panel, and if you are available and want to be a part of the process, because you want to be a part of the process, then you are welcome to be a part of the process.
Now, is that gonna throw off, is it, there'll be a voting process, or y'all, is that the?
Yes.
It'll be a airing down.
It's a airing down, so is that gonna, if we tie, we have a re-vote on the top two or something, I mean, we'll have to figure that out, but.
Don't you're talking about, if there's a.
Governance is like a giant, a degree. But, I mean, this is my perspective, so we, so we do the interview of the people.
Yeah.
You have your matrix?
That's, we got a matrix, and then, and then we're gonna have to decide who we wanna appoint, you know?
So who's gonna do the, I'm sorry, who's gonna do the appointment with the, uh, the minimum?
The minimums, yeah.
How's that?
But we, but we still, the, the city council, we still have the authority if someone applies, if we do override a recommendation, right?
Of course.
Yeah, we could, we could nominate somebody at city council.
Of course.
Absolutely.
That's not going way down.
It's also gonna go through the application process.
The interview panel will vote, and they will forward a recommendation to the city, to the city council.
Okay, so we're basically asking how we vote on that recommendation?
If we do that, I don't wanna hear when it comes to be. If we do that, I don't wanna hear when it comes to me, I say, I don't make the meeting, I don't wanna hear no, about them, council telling me, well, you should've been to meet.
No, no.
I'm gonna get hot about that, I'm not bragging, I'm paying for this microphone. You know?
I get you.
I don't wanna, I just wanna get clear, I don't wanna hear that, I can't make, cause I can't make every meeting. You know, my hell won't let me make every, y'all had too many of them lately, my hell. But I, I do, I do make all the city council meetings on Tuesday nights, I, I feel like I shouldn't be in the business if I can't do it. But I don't wanna hear from somebody on the council, well, Tommy, you didn't make the meeting, so you, you, your opinion don't matter, the doggone well does matter.
Oh, you're one or none.
Right, you're one or none.
Yeah, you know, I'm ready, I don't feel like I can, can, as soon as I hear you didn't make, cause I, I, all possible, I'm gonna make the meeting, I, I wanna be part of that.
Can we decide, do we want a minimum of three or minimum of five first off?
I think a minimum of five, since you're making an actual decision, it would be.
Okay, I'm okay with that, I don't, now, what's the makeup of five?
Well, I.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, go ahead.
No, I mean.
If you have nothing, nothing.
Because if five people can't make the interview day.
I think in the spirit of what the, the original, what your original thought was, trying to get schedules together and this sort of thing, just go with the three. If, if, if seven of us can show up, then great.
At least we're not, enough, we're not rescheduled.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, and the mayor has to be on.
That's what your original thought was.
I agree on that.
And the mayor has to be on.
Cause again, all that is is a recommendation.
If the mayor can't make it, I guess he can put me there as his designated.
So the mayor or the mayor pro temp must be at all, that must be at all.
And or.
And or, that'd be good, thank you, guy. So, who's, so what's up?
And or.
Well, it doesn't matter, it's e- either, because if I wanna come, I can come on a piece there.
One or the other.
Yeah, yeah. If you do an and, that means both.
And, what you got?
Oh, you.
It's, it's, it's just.
Two or.
Got old, uh, print, not old, what, what, what was that?
Seasoned, seasoned.
Well, I can be there, I mean, we can both be there regardless.
Well, the point is, who would be off, who would be taking the lead during the interview process, so that would be the.
Mayor, the world, mayor pro temp.
I wouldn't imagine that you'd take the lead, right?
Yeah, but if I'm out of town, I'm sitting that day, then we wanna make sure that Beth will be there for that, so.
Mayor pro temp.
So, so the understanding is if you're not available mayor, you'll be running, you'll be the, the control officer.
I'm still not clear how we're appointing the interview panel.
Well, I think it'll be up to me to work with the council, work with the staff, to set a date, and then we can send something out and see who's available, and make sure we've got at least three people there, I mean, I think that's how we do that. And then obviously then we gotta coordinate with applicants, so there's gonna be a lot of coordination in all this, without question.
Right.
So I think it's a lot of lead time for these two positions.
Correct.
A lot, just, we're gonna have to get way out in front of these two.
Now, they, they interviewed the matrix we talked about, the matrix is gonna correspond to the questions, this isn't the same matrix we're using for preliminary screening.
Correct.
You know, so, I mean, if, if the sample questions, you see everybody having an opportunity in their own mind to establish a scoring system, you know, how they respond to that, if they think, you know, if, if you have anything, oh, that, she did great, give her five, if, if he did great, give him a five, you know, but, at the end, consolidate one.
Your matrix is good, I mean, it's awesome.
Yeah, it's good.
Well, well, those little matrices are only, that's a preliminary screening, just eliminate people who simply aren't qualified.
Yeah, you know, that's good business.
Um, okay, so then, to back up and, and recap, deadlines we're good on, announcements we're good on, interviews for school board planning, minimum of three, mayor has the lead on those, and if he's unavailable, the mayor pro temp is, um, standing in, and all council members are certainly welcome and encouraged to be a part of that process. Um, and then we will look at, can we come to a consensus on the residency, two term and two commission? Those three items that as a culture and a spirit of how this board, this, this body will operate, that we will weigh heavily the recommendations of residency, two term limits, and, um, multiple board appointments. As how we weight those, um, recommendations for appointments.
So you're saying, you're suggesting we don't create an absolute on that, we create a spirit, a culture of this is, this is the intent, um, that people are citizens of Auburn, that people do only serve two terms, and that they do not serve on more than one board, except for these exceptions. That's, that's our recommendation, but we're not making an absolute, is that kinda where you're going with that?
I mean, that's kind of a consensus I was, um, getting from this conversation, but that's what I'm asking for, is, is that the direction, or do we, because I absolutely think everybody at this table's made valid points and arguments, and the, the, um, appetite is for these things to happen, but do we want to limit ourselves and our government, but also be, hold each other accountable, and at the end of the day, our constituency holds us accountable. So, but we've got to have, um, an understanding out on the slide, that when we have something come up, that we're gonna give weight to residency, multiple boards and, um, two terms, two full terms. I think that's the easier, um, not easier, but that's, um, I think a fair path to take.
If, if, yeah, but you should do that, I can revise all the, the individual board matrices or major matrices to, to include those, and you can factor it in, or not factor it in, whatever you wanna do on the screening process.
Yeah, so do it like I said, I prefer that we have only two, two limits, or prefer that we have, uh.
Residency, yeah.
You know, and, and prefer that you only only serve on one or two, I just don't, I just hate to paint yourself in the corners, my whole position, like I, I wholeheartedly agree with weighting that matrix, you know, in one way, I just don't wanna lay out, you know, an absolute.
We've, we've heard that, my momma put them into my herself, you know, my boy.
You're a smart guy, Tommy. Hey, Tommy, we appreciate you, brother.
So.
You bring a great perspective to this council, don't you know, I believe that.
Thank you. Does everybody get on that before everybody gets off of the, for that plan?
Yeah.
So we're not gonna have absolutes on items.
I think so.
Um, three, four and five.
Correct.
We're gonna take that into account, generally when we make our recommendation.
Correct. And hold each other accountable for that.
Sure.
All right, Beth, let's talk about this real quick, I know, I know everybody wants to go, and I love Auburn basketball or anything in the world, so we're missing the game here, but I think this is.
If you'd be glad.
Thank you, Tommy, appreciate your time this afternoon, brother.
Yeah, thank you.
It's pretty bad.
Fifteen to six.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, see you, Tommy, Merry Christmas. All right, let's talk about four instances, land commission, we get nineteen applicants, how do we get to, how do we call that down to a, a group of finalists? We use our matrix, who's responsible for that, and how do we communicate that?
I better run there.
Go buddy, go buddy.
Well, proposal was of the mayor pro temp.
Mayor pro temp's doing that, so you're, okay, all right, so we'll make sure.
I'll revise the matrices, whatnot, and if we like, we'll use them, if we don't, we'll.
That's good, great, okay.
And look, it, it will be, I mean, me picking up the phone and calling and saying.
You're open to feedback.
I need feedback, and I need, you know, like, Tom, you know, help the staff.
Thanks, Brett.
Staff.
Merry Christmas, man. Hey, thanks for being real tonight.
Merry Christmas, I'm here for it. Thank y'all for putting that together, appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you, brother.
But I mean, I, I don't wanna do this in a vacuum, and I want, like, I definitely will be calling everyone and saying, please.
That's why I wanna talk about it right here, just make sure we all understand.
Well, do you have a recommendation, do you, you know, because I feel like we've got to, that's part of this, that's culture, that's spirit of,
No question, right.
Connie call me and say, I've got a, you've got a candidate in your ward, or maybe not in your ward, that you think is gonna be excellent on X, Y, Z board. We need to know that, and, and then you, you encourage to make sure that person applies to the right channels, cause we've also got to educate our constituency on the right application process and doing that.
I, I didn't, yeah, I didn't agree, I think, um, you know, I've talked about this a lot, about getting a good marketing plan going, so I think, I think we get a lot of applicants, cause they're just unaware that there are these positions that are open, and I, I.
Especially these ones that don't come with a profile, that are still so important.
Well, and that board's a, um, commission open house that we recommended, hopefully it will spur that marketing effort as well, where we can post maybe, if not annually, biannually, uh, boards and commission open house that says, here's what's in the pipeline, this is what this one does, this one, this one does, and.
This one's coming open ninety days or something, uh, really.
Was it like?
How, how is that to, to the community now, cause I, honestly, I don't see anything on social media, I mean, we, we've got to do, I think,
Well.
Some, some major rebranding.
Well, I think, I think, let's, let's get with staff, and let's try to have that open house here in the first sixty days of next year, and try to boil it up, and make everybody aware of it, and let's start with that, and try to get some information out there, that'd be my.
And we've, we've talked through some of this stuff, where, I mean, we can put it on Facebook, and, and any kind of media we need to, to get the word out.
And the, and the last piece of that is on announcements, is this commission, is this council prepared to, um, to instruct the city manager to, you know, add additional dollars to put these announcements in the new table? Cause we're not doing that now. And what does that cost, so we need to know that, but, um, but I mean, if it's in, if it's in the legals.
As a, as a, as a daily, lifetime daily newspaper subscriber.
And, and reader. I don't, I don't know that we'd be getting our things, you know, I don't know that we'd be really getting our things about that.
Do you think open line, social media, identifier?
Yeah, I don't think open line really, I mean, I know we all get it, and I get a water bill every month, and I don't remember the last time I even opened an envelope.
Well, we're gonna make also, it was sort of there, push that out to the media, and have the, the stories on, I'm sure they're willing to do that.
When we, hold it right along the rough and get it, get streaming our TV channel.
Yes, and it'll be on, on.
That's right, we, we figure out another way, I'd probably delay the project, though, it's actually done for out there.
Right, and the other ones, Beth, the ones that we don't have, I heard you, the other ones we don't have interviews on, you're gonna receive the applications, you will talk amongst the, the council, you will be the one who brings that recommendation to the council, to committee, the whole.
Right.
You will make a recommendation.
Having received them, but from the.
Absolute, now, that still doesn't preclude, if Kelly's really got somebody he's fired up about, that he doesn't offer a second nomination after that, doesn't preclude you from doing it. You're doing your best job of canvassing everybody and trying to use your due diligence.
And you can offer more than one nomination.
Yes.
Doesn't have to be a single nomination.
Correct.
But that's one of the things, gave the impression that we had one person doing all the stuff in the past.
Yeah.
And I know there was a lot of coordination going on between y'all, you know, but when it came to the meeting, it was, you know, one guy doing it all, so you're just making.
Well, you're right, I mean, perception was, but the reality is.
I mean, y'all were coordinating it all.
We were coordinating, he was doing a good job, thank goodness, he really enjoyed doing it, and we were thankful for him, big time, so, okay. All right, hey, look, we're making some changes, okay, and we're doing some things different, and sometimes it's, um, clumsy getting out of the starting gate, and I, I appreciate y'all's time, and I appreciate it, this was a great, real conversation, we had some hard topics and some little debates here, and we're all gonna smile and wish each other Merry Christmas when we leave here, that's great.
It's good to do it here and not on the dice.
It's just good to do it.
I, I have a question about this, I, I was listening at you, but, so are we gonna, okay, you say, you know, like, you're gonna be contacting everybody, you know, just to see if they got somebody you wanna nominate or something like this, which I think is a good thing, simply because I don't want to wait till the night and then propose to somebody that I want, so at least we can be able to discuss.
Right.
This, because, you know, it feels sort of awkward that you nominate somebody, but everybody else's mind already made up as to the person they want, and they didn't, if, you didn't even know that I was gonna nominate this person.
Right, right.
So there need to be some discussion, you know, first, as to who we wanna nominate. Um, and in my ward, I know that there's a lot of people that don't know that these boards, and they have acts, and how do you get on the boards?
Right.
How do you get on these commissions and stuff? So, I would also recommend, since we, we doing live now, that during the, and, and y'all may, may have said this, but during the announcement part of it, that you announce that these positions coming open, because a lot of people are gonna be watching.
So adding that to our council meetings, that these positions are.
Yes, during, during the announcement part, that these positions are coming open.
You think we could do like a sixty day or ninety day kind of preview that, so things, we can get out ahead of things, Kevin? Right now, we kinda do the.
I knew that already, we already announced when they, that we do that party dance, I mean, we kinda do it.
Well, we're doing it about, about a percent in advance.
Which is a good thing, because.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, because, you know, you don't want, you know, if something coming open in, uh, six months from then, you're gonna forget. So, yeah, you know, to do it within a good time limit, so it'd be on somebody's mind, but my intention also is that when I'm having my community meetings, I wanna be able to say that these positions are coming open, and if anybody wanted to apply for them, it's pretty much like I did last night about the diversity and inclusion task force, you know, so that we can, you know, that I can put it out there, because, once again, inclusion for every ward.
Absolutely.
You know, so we don't wanna make it seem like, we don't want these, um, boards and commission not to be diverse.
No, absolutely not, no question about that.
And, and, and.
No question about that, Kevin.
Yeah, so, so, you know, platform and that, that's on them, but at least the information they wanna apply, and then that way I can give them some kind of guidelines as to say, okay, now, the position is coming open, and it is time, you have until the, to get your application, if you need me to bring your application, or you can go here and get an application, but if you're really interested in being on some of these boards and commission, then here's the opportunity.
Are you having set ward meetings?
Mm-hmm.
Like set times of, of the.
Well, I have to come up with them, but I, I, my plans are to have one every other month.
Okay.
Okay, but I don't know the dates every other month.
So we can ask staff to make sure that for a council person's ward meeting, that, um, not only do they have that slip that's like the frequently asked questions and who you call, which is a great marketing piece, but also a piece that says, here are upcoming, um, and like kind of pipeline, board vacancy, kinda things, it's just there for you to pick up if you wanna pick up.
So we produce a monthly memo for you guys for the board, huh?
Yeah.
Yes, that'd be great.
So we can have them to hand hours.
Cause now we did that already, but if we can have it so it's available, print it off, you know, multiple copies, so people can take it with them.
Well, it'd help me, if there's something we need to be announcing and really putting some spotlight on at our council meetings, let's do that.
Yeah.
Let's, let's do that.
Somebody emailed me about, and that's from scratch. Somebody emailed me about, um, whether or not the applicants themselves, the information on the applicants will be available to the public. Did you see that, something that we would publish somewhere, or would be available online, that says, shows the applicant pool for the public view, is that?
Can we, I mean, maybe their name, but I don't know, do we?
Is that privacy?
The whole, the, the whole.
Is that privacy?
No, just the name of the applicant.
Just the names.
So if somebody wanted to go into the constituency, who's, who's, uh, applied for this job?
Well, that wouldn't be, um, released until the application deadlines pass, like, if it closes on Monday, five P M., then Tuesday, or when the council receives all those applications, then that could be made public, like, right? I mean, it'd be part of the packet, be part of the packet for, can be.
Well, they, was their intent to kind of find out if people had applied, make a determination whether they were, whether they were gonna be interested or not, with that kind of.
They, I, 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 my, my feeling was that they just wanted to see the, 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 the public, who, who the public is that is applying.
Without knowing the legal, what we're doing, especially legally, I mean, I kinda like the idea that the day of the deadline, once the deadline is, that there's some mechanism where the names are published at that point in time, with everybody that's applied.
Can just be part of the packet?
You don't get the packet till Friday, though.
But, I mean, we would get it, um.
We could get it at a time, but the public, the packet, you know, just, it's not public till Friday, so I guess Bob, Bob would probably prefer that we get that out as soon as possible, based on.
I would say.
I'm just relaying a constituent's question.
I would say on that seventh day, cause we have eight days, right, so on the seventh day, on the seventh day, um, everybody, the whole council will receive a PDF packet of all the applications, knowing that then we all go to work, and you can one off email or call, or I one off email and call, and say, is there anybody who does, you know, a really stark, you know, and then we'll go through the matrix, I'll do the matrix and narrow it down, if there's ten, we'll narrow it down to, you know, however many applic, how many nominations are available, and then, in that same timeframe, you guys are, are communicating and saying, I, I recommend this person or X, Y, Z, and then, uh, but it can't be, you know, it can't be everybody together, right?
Right.
Um, just, cause that's not how we operate, but, but then in the packet, the list, the names of the applications, the applicants could be listed as for this board, Jane Doe, John Smith, and Albert Einstein, all three applied, just their names, I, I mean, is that?
Uh, general.
Just have their name.
So ideally on the seventh day, we would all get a PDF packet of all the applications for that appointment.
So we can, for.
So we all have the same amount of time to work through, cause the reason for the deadline is, one, to cut it off, so staff knows what, um, is gonna be in the packet, two, so that we have time.
Yeah.
To make that, I don't mean each other, um, so that we have time to actually go through them and do the matrix.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, legally, I don't know that there's an issue with, you know, the names and the applicants, I mean, it's public record.
Yeah.
Now, you know, do people want, you know, I applied for this board, and I didn't get it, or I don't want everybody to know that, I mean, that's kind of something, seems.
Great point, yeah, he makes a great point.
Well, on the application process, it can say, your name will, you know.
Well, I don't see why it would be important to a person to know who, uh, applied, if they were gonna apply for the position, just apply for the position. You know, it doesn't matter to me who applied for a position, that, that is my thought.
Hey, I, I would be, uh, I would simply got us email.
But, and you know, I, if I was applying for a position, even at work, it doesn't matter to me who my competition is, I'm just gonna apply for the position.
By the time, by the time the list comes out, it's too late anyway.
Yeah.
You know, like.
And, you know, I, I just don't think that ought to be concerned, you know, some, some concerns are not concerns.
Right.
And we don't need to.
I think it gives an opportunity for people in the public to, you know, maybe reach out to us and say, hey, John Smith over here, he applied, and, you know, I really like John Smith here, but I mean, actually we see that through the a- application process too, so, nevermind.
Well.
Thank you.
Don't get worried about supporting someone.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Well, they have the opportunity, they have the time to call John Smith, I mean, if they call John Smith and ask if he applied, and then, then they can.
So, uh, okay, well, based on what I've heard you talk about today, I think probably the way that we need to go is just to, to do a, a resolution, and we're hereby adopting the tax policy pertaining to the board and commission appointments, and then we'll lay out what, what you've talked about, and then you'll vote on adopting that, that resolution, so it won't have the full force and effect of the law, it's one of the ordinance per se, it's, it's, this is a policy resolution.
Okay.
So, um, what I need to do, I think, is probably work with Beth and, and Kelly to kind of form up that, that, the way, exactly the way we want that, that written draft, the resolution, so, what, what kind of timeframe is your expectation if you wanna get this, get this?
I mean, I, my sense would be as, as soon as reasonable, as soon as we reasonably can, um, but I don't wanna be reckless in doing that, so I wanna make sure we do the right thing, but as soon as we reasonably can.
Is it eight double, or do you think the second week, second meeting in January?
Well, I think it'd probably be, um, I think it'd be, you know, if we set the second meeting, I think we'd be, we'd be safe. If we had it ready for the first meeting, time to get it on the agenda, we would, I mean, if Bob and Lynn is where.
Two weeks, I think.
And the first meeting is the, is the eight.
I'm around to.
I'm around.
I mean, if we could, I mean, let's shoot for the eight.
Let's not put it on three the whole, and then introduce it following.
I said, that's not on the agenda.
I think they've got a consensus of where you wanna go.
Yeah, this will come on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All right, so Beth, so, the, the two boards we're gonna announce, we're gonna interview for, so those deadlines have got to be ramped up, they can't be eight days before the council meeting, so do we, have we identified what those deadlines would be? Uh, it's gotta be a pretty good amount of time, cause we've gotta have time to, to, to do the interview process of.
Interview before or after?
Whether, we're gonna do the down select, and then we announce what down select is, and then we schedule the interview. Or do we do the interviews, and then we come to the council and say, these are our top two, we're gonna vote on them or something. Just to be real, the interviews ought to be after we, we scrub. You gather the applications, you scrub them to a group of finalists, and then you do the interview, and then you decide on your nomination, that's what I was thinking.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so we've gotta get some lead time in there, it's more than eight days.
Coming up now?
Got school board.
It'll be February.
Oh, yeah.
A month?
A month to have it.
So for the interview, the two interview boards or commission, one month out.
February, we meet on the fourth and the eighteenth.
If we announce it on the eighth?
Now, it's on January eighth, we can make that appointment on the eighteenth.
There it is.
Is that legally, and I, I have no idea of the legal ramifications, so just give it, help me on this.
Yeah, there's not a, I mean, that's just a, that's a kind of a courtesy, there, there's just not a legal requirement.
So if you make the announcement on the eighteenth, that means if we make the announcement on the eighth, our council meeting is on February the eighteenth, and we would have to have, if we do a month, that means that we've given them about ten days to get their application in, legally.
Two weeks to get your application in after being announced, is that sufficient, or?
I would think so.
And then a two week timeframe to set interviews, to scrub it, set interviews, and then come back, so actually probably.
Let's think what works, because I think, once again, the school board thing, let's not be held hostage by this first one, so let's think about what's a great system for the future, um, since the school superintendent has told me more than once, we can make it work with four school board members for a little while, so.
But if you say, make the announcement, give a the same deadline by the next, um, that's when we're making that appointment, so these would be different, um.
We don't have to do this tonight, but that's something we need to be thinking about, cause we need to include that in this resolution, correct, Kevin?
You gotta remember now, Beth and I can't talk, can't meet together. No, I don't, we have a session, I'm serious, you know, we can't collaborate, because then we have a quarrel, which is not public, so.
Waiting on them. That's a joke, y'all.
Since staff is more, um, familiar with how that flows better, can you give us a recommendation of that time, right, that timeline, please?
That's great. So, Kevin. Okay, anything else? Thank y'all for your time, I appreciate your sincerity, your transparency and your honesty, and your ability to tell us how you feel, that's a great thing.
Now, if we get a qualification, how do you qualify, are we gonna do something?
Well, you know, Kelly, Beth talked about that.
Qualification.
So some of these have got distinct qualifications, they have quite professional qualifications, we just made a couple of appointments that you had to be an engineer, you had to be an architect, for those, right, Kelly? You did that at the second meeting.
All these are, these are all the boards and commissions that we have, or the ones that we are responsible for, making sure that we do, and outline in each one has all the requirements. This is online, but would you like this copy and others?
She will.
Okay.
Bye.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, all right, thank y'all.
We have a meeting tomorrow at four thirty today.
Merry Christmas, thank y'all.
We are, we are, I, I'll be there. That's the last, twenty years, huh?